Six five, we're having a meeting in order.
One that we believe is to comply with the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Taking motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Jim and a second by Steve to approve the agenda. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Next under public comment, is there any public comment in the audience tonight? We did get a letter here that I will read under public comment and I'll address some of the things listed here. Here are some concerns, it says here are some concerns I see as a citizen of Hampton. No one is scooping the sidewalk in between the library and the post office by the drop boxes. Looks like a farm of the former Midwest meter buildings across from the North CD plant. And what about that equipment on the sidewalk just across the street from City Hall that had a hazard during the winter months? And it's anonymous. Doug, can you address some of these concerns?
Sure. First of all, I think the non-scooping between the post office and libraries, something I can be addressed, that would be the post office's responsibility because there'd be adjacent property owner. And that can happen fairly easily, so I'll take care of that. As far as the farm of the former Midwest meter building, I guess, I drove up there, I have noticed there's quite a few more livestock trailers and such being parked around in that area. But one thing we need to understand is that's a non-conforming structure, it's non-conforming uses. And they've been non-conforming since the zoning change, it's actually an R2 zoning district. It's my understanding that at one time it used to be a light industrial. And I believe there used to be an open lumberyard there. And non-conforming is kind of one of those touchy subjects, whereas if the property would have set idle, with no use at all for a period of up to one year, it would have needed a new conditional use permit issued by the Board of Adjustment to go ahead and do something different, maybe that doesn't meet the R2 zoning criteria. But at this time, like I said, it's been non-conforming since, I believe, 2001, which was the last time the zoning was updated in that area. I think we could potentially ask the property owner to put some additional screening up perhaps, if someone in the neighborhood is feeling that their properties are being devalued because of this. I think some screening could be something that could remedy the situation. And I can always get further input from the city attorney too. The equipment that was across the street here, that was for, actually, we'd sent a notice to the property owner over there to make some repairs to their building because there's a dangerous situation there with some bricks that were protruding from the facade. A contractor was hired, and quite honestly, if they were to get a building permit, you could have that scaffolding up to a year. Our building permits are good for one year. However, it's gone now, so hopefully they felt maybe that there's some chest to serve here. But it has been removed, I do think that there's some more repairs that'll be made in the future at that building. But when, I don't know. But it should be safe now. That's why the scaffolding and stuff is going to take down.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Biggest reason I wanted Doug to address that is just because I felt it was a good opportunity to explain the grandfathered property with the zoning change and everything. It's something that I think escapes people as time goes by. Just wanted to remind them of that. Thanks Doug. Next we have consideration of approval of Hampton Fire Department 2014 roster of elected officials. Council votes, the list of elected officers. Kent Wilkinson is chief, Scott Strutter is assistant chief, Mike Crowley is lieutenant chief, Clay Miller is president, Trev Murphy is treasurer, Alex Haas is secretary, and Brad Shing and Brandon Greedy as trustees. Questions? Taking a motion now?
I'd make a motion to approve.
A motion by Dan and a second by Val to approve the 2014 Hampton Fire Department roster of elected officials. Any discussion?
I've got a question here. I know that on the list of attendants or council meetings, the police chief is always here. Is it possible, I mean, is it necessary that he be here? I don't think it ever has happened. Can we ask him just for a brief report?
The fire chief.
Fire chief, I'm sorry.
Aye.
In lieu of being here?
Yeah, I should recall about a year or so ago when we wrote that in and changed the agenda and added the fire chief to it, the intention there was just to gain some type of communication out. I don't necessarily mind if it's in written form or in person, I guess. Just some type of communication. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is discussion of proposed amendments, chapter 149, Public Water Supply Well Protection Regulations to Improve Agriculture and Perform Use. How went wrong there for discussion on this?
Thank you, Mayor. What prompted this to come up was some farmland that was being sold directly west of the industrial park and west of the old EFG coating facility, west of the railroad. It's land that's in the wellhead protection zone, we've got some wells out there which I've identified on this map here. The blue, this is the primary protection zone, and then highlighted with blue dots, some of the wells. And this ordinance, chapter 149, spells out the regulations for the wellhead protection zone. And one of the potential buyers, we contacted Mr. Johansson, I think Randy is his first name, who is handling the sale for the estate, and just reminded him of the wellhead protection plan that included the land that was being sold, just as a courtesy. And one of the potential buyers had a question as to why ag was not permitted use in the zones. And this plan was drafted in 1998. And I wasn't here at the time, and so I had to do some research as to why it wasn't. So I think what happened was it was just inadvertently left out, ag is a permitted use. I talked with the DNR, got their opinion on it, an engineer out of Des Moines who deals with wellhead protection zones. He felt too that it was probably inadvertently left out because typically, ag is a permitted use. You're looking at two to three thousand acres of ag that is in all three of these zones. This is the primary, the secondary, and I can't remember the third zone. So he thought, he said the DNR would support, the council wanted to amend chapter 149 and include ag as a permitted use. He said he would provide a letter of support for doing that. It's not realistic to think that we are going to not let anybody in that huge of an area not harm the ground. We're concerned with safe chemical application and things like that, chemical spills, hazardous waste and things like that. So what I've supplied you is chapter 149 to review and just to let you know that we're going to make a recommendation at a future council meeting for the draft amendment to section 149.04, number one, which spells out permitted uses in the primary protection zone. It talks about industrial buildings within the industrial park and talks about playgrounds, parks, wildlife areas, open spaces, lawns and gardens, non-motorized trails. And the DNR is recommending that we include ag use as a permitted use because it states under number one, if use is not listed, R to be considered prohibited. And then the second section would be under the secondary zone, which is 149.051, would be the same type of wording. So I just wanted to get this information in front of you, so you can be looking at it. If anybody has any questions, we can talk about it right now. And we can again talk about it when we bring an amendment forth. That's hope your council authorized us to keep moving forward with such an amendment.
At the airport, we have had some questions raised as far as what can be used and what can't be used right on our property. Are we proposing, we're not proposing that that be extended to these outer circles. We're actually clarifying that all agricultural use is okay.
Well, if you look at 149.0, let's see. 149.05. 149.06, number two, A. Talks about additional restrictions. No person shall discharge or cause or permit discharge of hazardous substance in excess of labeled quantities to the soil, groundwater, or surface water within the zone of sensitivity. And that's also listed for the other zones as well, that was the quickest one I could find. But it's in C of 149.04. So that right there covers chemical applications on farm ground. They can't do anything in excess of labeled quantities.
They're treating it just like other agricultural ground.
Yeah, well, they must treat it carefully too. I mean, it's a little different in that they're in a protection zone.
I think we also need to take into consideration whatever we allow there too. As far as what was planned, there was concerns about some crops produce different types of birds and bugs and different things that could affect pilots. But then we also know that high restrictions near the rod wires, some other purposes as well besides this. So there's kind of a catch point too out there a little bit on our part.
Excuse me, some of that too, because it's what we discussed when we developed the contract that we put restrictions in that for that specific reason.
Right.
To limit the high grass growth and various items like that in chemical applications because of that, there was a difference.
Yep, there is a little bit of difference there, so definitely.
Is everyone okay with moving forward with drafting an amendment? I guess I'd like to have that put into motion so we can proceed.
We can get that on a motion.
I assume that we move forward with drafting an amendment that would allow agriculture use in these surrounding identified surrounding areas of the city's wellheads.
Second. A motion by Dick and a second by Craig to move forward with drafting the amendment to amend the wellhead protection ordinance to include agriculture as a permitted use. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next we have approval of the claims submitted by staff tonight, that's in the amount of eighty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Any motion?
No move.
Second.
Second.
A motion by Steve and a second by Dan to approve the claims submitted by staff in the amount of eighty-four thousand, three hundred thirty-one dollars and sixty-four cents. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Next on the agenda is consideration of approval and adoption of resolution 2013-32, a resolution approving letter of understanding between Teamsters Local Number 238 and the City of Hampton, Iowa regarding the transfer of employees from the City of Hampton to Franklin County Emergency Management Commission, appropriated to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Be it resolved by the city council, the city of Hampton, Iowa, whereas the city council has reviewed the details of the letter of understanding between Teamsters Local 238 and the City of Hampton for the transfer of employees from the City of Hampton to the Franklin County Emergency Management Commission. And whereas the city council finds it in the best interest of the City of Hampton to proceed with proposed dispatching services transition for combining and sharing services. And whereas said letter of understanding represents the final document outlining transition details of dispatch employee. I'll therefore be able to resolve with the city council of the City of Hampton, Iowa, hereby approve the letter of understanding as attached and directs the mayor and city manager to enter into an agreement on behalf of the City of Hampton, Iowa. This is not the 2080 agreement that is, talks about the financing and the structure and the management of the dispatching communication services. This is simply a document that spells out the transition of the employee, the current employees would transition to be Emergency Management Commission employees. And it also talks about that they would understand that they have, that would be under the Franklin County benefit package. Because Emergency Management Commission doesn't have its own set aside benefits package. Their director, they have an agreement with their director that he gets county benefits. And then this is also setting up the same scenario that dispatching employees would transfer over with the same seniority that they have here. And it spells out the terms of the benefits, vacation, holidays, pay, things like that. A little history on this is that the city version of the letter of understanding matched Franklin County benefits broadly. Some wording regarding vacation allocation and longevity benefits did not match Franklin County union contract exactly. But that's because our attorney when drafting the document was using our union contract and we gave him general information as far as what Franklin County benefits are. So in the first draft of that, that's how it was presented to Local 238, the union. The union then responded to the city version with requests for overtime triggered at hours worked over eight hours per day instead of after forty hours in a week. And requested vacation allocation and longevity pay mirror city benefits. The city did not officially respond to the Teamsters regarding these issues and waited for Franklin County to state an acceptable position since transferring employees would be utilizing county benefits, which are set by Franklin County supervisors. So the supervisors worked with their labor attorney in tweaking the document, which we call the city version document, a letter of understanding, until they reached a point a week or so ago where they felt comfortable and they submitted us with disagreement, spelled out what they'd be agreeable to. So some of the revised items include adding definitions of the pay period, part-time employees, and leave of absence. They also require that overtime be triggered after forty hours per week, not after eight hours per day. And a definition details of funeral leave eligibility, when vacation accruals will be allocated, wage increases listed, and clearly stating that longevity will match Franklin County longevity scale in the City of Hampton. So with those changes and revisions that the Franklin County supervisors wished, they are in this document that is in front of you for consideration tonight. This document has been submitted to the union Local 238. And we have not yet heard from them, but we are free to move forward with this. And so I'd be happy to talk about it, answer any questions you have. I think what I will do for the public's benefit is just run down some of the headings of it. It talks about references to police chief, which would be the supervisor at the communications commission. It changes any wording referenced from city manager to supervisor at the emergency management, communications supervisor. References to the city would be changed to the commission. References to the city council would be changed to the commission. References to department would appear in the contract would be changed to dispatch center. New seniority list consisting exclusively of dispatch employees at the commission will be prepared and will be applied in all matters in the contract where seniority is the determining factor. New hires will be subject to the terms of the contract. Section 106, definitions, talks about the pay period is from 12 a.m. Sunday to 11:59 p.m. on Saturday. It is going to include definitions of part-time, Franklin County's definition of a part-time employee, which I do not have here. Section 3.01, leave of absence. It defines leave of absence, who is eligible for them, what benefits they would earn or not earn. It defines the work week. Schedule, the work schedule for employees will be determined by the supervisor. Time and a half shall be paid to employees for all hours worked in excess of forty hours per week. Employees have the right to accumulate and carry over from year to year up to two hundred and forty hours of unscrewed time. City employees who have accumulated comp time, while employed by the city and have not used comp time prior to the transfer of employees to the commission will be paid in cash for any accumulated unused comp unscrewed time. Use comp time will be scheduled with the supervisor, separate emergencies, one posted. Work weeks notice must be given for requests for two or more consecutive workdays and a minimum of twenty-four hour notice for requests for one posted workday or less. List holidays, I believe there's eleven total, there's a couple halves in there, but it totals eleven days. Vacations, employees transferred to the commission will be permitted to carry over. Their accumulated unused vacation will be awarded vacation on the anniversary of their date of hire, stated on the attached seniority list based on the following schedule. One year, at completion of one year, they get five working days. Completion of two years, ten working days. Vacation, completion of eight years, fifteen working days. Completion of fifteen years, twenty working days. Completion of twenty years, twenty-five working days. Completion of twenty-five years, thirty working days. Vacation shall be computed on the employee's anniversary date and shall accrue during each pay period. Vacation is granted on a personal first serve basis, with the supervisor having control. Sick leave earned, that will earn at the rate of eighteen days or one hundred forty-four hours per year up to a maximum of nine hundred hours. Funeral leave discusses what types, how many days for funeral leave for certain relatives' deaths. Insurance basically spells out the current insurance contributions of regular Franklin County employee. Commission pays a hundred percent of the single premium, a hundred percent of the dependent premium minus the employee's contribution for dependent coverage of seventy-two dollars. And section fourteen, wages, it just spells out, July 1st, 2014, that'll be a one percent across the board. July 1st, 2015, another one percent across the board. And longevity would be on the anniversary date of each employee, ten cents after five years. That's per hour, ten cents per hour after ten years, and twenty cents per hour after twenty years. Any questions, comments?
There's no questions, no affirmative motion?
I assume that we approve resolution 2013-32.
Second. A motion by Nick and a second by Val to approve and adopt resolution 2013-32. Any discussion? Mark Bolton, Lou Pecker?
Aye.
Lons?
Aye.
Davies?
Aye.
Lukensmeyer?
Aye.
Prowley?
Aye.
Arvin?
Aye.
Next on the agenda tonight, we have the consent agenda. Including approving the previous minutes as drafted from Thursday, December 12th, 2013, regular session meeting. And scheduling the next regular session for Thursday, January 9th, 2014 at 6:00 p.m. at City Council Chambers. Any motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
And a second?
Second.
A motion by Dan and a second by Val to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close. Motion carries. Next tonight, we have staff reports, Fire Chief Wilkinson, a desk, Police Chief Schaefer.
Thank you, Mayor. City council, city manager. Don't have a lot to report tonight. However, Kent Wilkinson will be starting the academy January 6th. If you were looking at the invoices or the bills, that's part of what that Tree America is. That's for meals, while he's down there. Also, there was another one in there from Ray O'Hara, and it's under uniforms. We had to buy basically all the pepper spray because it does go and expire after a certain length of time. So that's what most of that was. Other than that, I really don't have anything. Wish everybody Merry Christmas and Happy and Safe Holiday.
Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. The biggie for today is we have our four-way flashing red lights up and running. Heard a couple positive comments about that already, so I think that's good. And it didn't take long to get things accomplished there, so just looking for someone to turn up thermostat outside. You guys have been working hard at some snow removal here recently. Looks like there's a little bit of forecast, but hopefully we can avoid it like we have been so far, the big stuff. So any questions or concerns? Been hitting the budget really hard and getting ready to tackle things here on the first of the year again. Everybody, Merry Christmas, and reminder to folks, shovel them sidewalks, please. Thanks.
Mayor, you're done?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know, about six weeks ago, I guess, the wastewater treatment plant, they had a pipe burst in the basement of the old lab building and consequently filled it up with five foot of sewage and had quite a mess. And it did damage some pumps that got submerged that aren't designed to be submerged. And so just to let you know that we... Jerry has provided invoices for all the work as a result that's been done. It was about five thousand nine hundred dollars worth of loss. And we today received a check from EMC for four thousand nine hundred. We have a thousand dollar deductible, so it's covered on our insurance. The Fire Department's Plymouth Fury is for sale now on eBay, which appreciate the radio station and the newspaper letting people know and publicizing that. It's a good way for the Fire Department to raise funds. I hope, I think, how many more days there are, but I encourage anybody interested in bidding on that to do so on eBay. And just want to thank Mayor Deeds and Councilman Craig Eckhart and Mike Cross, who will be departing. It's been nice working with you and appreciate your service.
Motion to that side.
And Merry Christmas, everybody.
Council reports, any problem?
The only thing I have is I was glad to see the main street lights are up and going now. And just Merry Christmas.
I'm glad to see the lights going. I think they're working great, just as they are. Thank you. I meant to say this in regard to the dispatch switch over. The hours that were a period more than a year that Brian, you and Sean put into helping this plan get into place were close. So thank you for that. Very glad that's happening. Craig, over a decade of dedication here, took the job seriously. Every effort to save the city money, you're doing it in a reasonable way, so thank you very much. Of course, Sean, your leadership, the openness that you bring with the chair. There are many times when your opinion was different than those of the elected officials. And you didn't let the good way of referencing it, but you do.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Craig and Sean for their service. But just because you're not sitting up here, you're welcome to come and sit out there. And Merry Christmas to everyone.
Thank you. Steve?
Well, yeah, I've been sitting next to this guy for going on ten years, twelve years where I've done. And during that time, we've agreed to disagree on quite a few issues. And you and I disagreed on two issues. So it's nice to be able to work together though and compromise and come to a conclusion. And I think it's been worthwhile. Merry Christmas and happy, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, it's been a pleasure working with you. And Craig, I appreciate that.
Mayor, it's been a pleasure working with you, and Craig, I appreciate the time you've taken to explain things to me in certain meaning, some things that we've had to learn and bring up in all these.
Craig? Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to thank everybody else too for their years of service to the council. I'd like in particular to thank city manager, public works director, and chief of police for all that they do for all of us. A lot of it goes unnoticed, but there's a lot behind the scene work involved with any of this, whether you're a mayor or a city councilman. And I appreciate everybody's support. And again, it just further goes to say what Steve says. I think he needs to learn how to get along with people. That's even better off for him. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
I've got some comments I do. I actually have these. I have a prepared statement. My tongue's been bleeding for two years. Just kind of some general thoughts, not really so much on city government, but on government in the political world in general. And I think we all agree that the idea of justice and justice ought to be blind. And just as a reminder, or bring it to everybody's forefront, I don't know if people think about it in these terms, but we live in a state now that has allowed people who have admitted to and been convicted of sexual abuse to walk free. That being a crime that according to the Iowa County Attorney Association carries a mandatory prison sentence, yet people who post pictures on Facebook face charges of terrorism. When the system is allowed to work free from political pressures, it's a system that is the best in the history of mankind, yet people say the system is broke. I don't believe it's the system that's flawed, but the people within the system. People who would prefer to turn a blind eye to the Constitution and the principles held within that they swore to uphold, not just for their elected or appointed terms, but for life. We recite a pledge of allegiance to all glory before these meetings, and we repeat the words often. In the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. But perhaps what would be more convenient is, in the democracy for which it stands, one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for fifty-one percent. But I guess maybe that just doesn't seem to have the same ring to it. Our Iowa flag boldly proclaims, our liberties we prize and our rights we'll maintain. And as individuals, we allow our liberties to be sold at the highest bidder, seemingly always electing the candidate who spends the most for a vote as a state. And as a state, we allow our 10th Amendment rights to be usurped by Washington without question. Many people have asked how I'll fill my time in 2014 and beyond, and I'm not ready and not yet ready to disclose my full plans, but I can tell you that I will continue my devotion to spread the message of liberty for my children, for my family, and the people of Iowa who are guaranteed those blessings in the U.S. Constitution and should expect nothing less. We must get our priorities straight. We must get to a place where we care less about Duck Dynasty, we're the biggest loser, and more about the fact that a federal bureaucrat possessing the knowledge that you called your younger sister to talk about those shows, yet little did you know you also called your big brother. I have thoroughly enjoyed my two years as Hampton's mayor. It's been eye-opening in many positive ways and unfortunately in some negative ways. But one thing I'll always say for sure is that I have no regrets and I'll always be one-hundred percent proud of the job that I did and the experience gained by working with all of the folks at this table and behind those doors in City Hall. And one final thought on that quote that I found that I think is interesting is James Madison once said that all men having power ought to be distrusted to a certain degree. And I think, I think some people are probably aware that I have an issue with trust. And that's kind of where that comes from. Kind of going off the cuff to leave on a little bit of a positive note, as Craig mentioned, all the work that city staff does, especially want to point out Ron and his management of City Hall and the city staff for the conservative way that you run the city on a day-to-day basis. We certainly would not be in the healthy fiscal position that we are without everything that you do and your staff. So we appreciate that very much. One other note to pass along, just on your calendars, we'll have the swearing-in of Vic and June for their second terms on the council. Councilman Jay Hickman for his first term in the fourth ward. And Brooke Memler for his first term as mayor. We'll have that swearing-in on December 30th at 5:00 PM. If there's nothing else, I'd call for a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn. Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Six thirty-six, we're adjourned.